...nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is reports of city officers. I have really one item myself. Resolution on the occasion of the retirement of a twenty-year employee of the city. I'd like to read a resolution and have the council act on it. Whereas Nada S. Seidau has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since July 7th, 1997. And whereas Nada Seidau will honorably retire from the city on July 7th, 2017. And whereas Nada Seidau served in the following positions during her dedicated career. Police officer, youth officer, detective, and records clerk. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Nada Seidau for public service faithfully performed. And be further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Nada with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the August 7th, 2017 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Signed, Robert T. E. Lansing, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Seidau. She's unable apparently to be here this evening, otherwise we'd present it personally. First, I guess actually we need to have a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Resolution. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, for approximately the last seven-plus years, we've been discussing the issue of public safety consolidation, the provision of fire and EMT service potentially with other communities. Those dialogues, those conversations have occurred with communities of Highland Park and Highwood and Lake Bluff and Knollwood and Libertyville. And to date, it's pretty much the same as it was seven years ago when we started with the exception of Highland Park taking over operations in Highwood. But recently, we were approached by the Knollwood, or the Rockland Fire Protection District, or better known as Knollwood area, about their EMT service. And we submitted a proposal earlier this year, but they recommended staying with the Libertyville, Village of Libertyville for that service. But have recently now approached us and said, "Lake Forest," and they sent a similar letter to Libertyville saying, "Would you please give us a proposal to take over all of the operations, both EMT as well as fire rescue service within the boundaries of our district?" Now, to, and I think you have revised maps in front of you here because the one we gave you before didn't include, with this small area here that's in between the Village of Lake Bluff and Libertyville and Libertyville Fire Protection District is the Knollwood Fire District. I think it's less than one square mile. And part of the conversation, I think, is that they are a volunteered with some paid-on-premise personnel and looking at what are their options, whether they stay under their current format or whether they do something different going forward. And so they were reaching out to the adjoining communities to see what, if any, services they can provide. Let's see, do I have to do this? Oh, no, sorry. That's later. So the purpose of this item being on the agenda this evening is to really get some feedback from the city council. Is if we are going to put together a team, a task force, if you will, to prepare a proposal to submit to Rockland, what should be the guidelines that are in place to help define how and what is included in any proposal that we would submit? And these are some guidelines that we used when we submitted the EMT service proposal earlier in this year. But first, I think foremost is no diminished service to Lake Forest and Lake Forest residents. I think it would be hard to justify going out and extending our contract if it meant a diminishment of service to Lake Forest residents. Secondly, I think certainly an operational structure must be sustainable long-term. And this is something that the various committees have been talking about as we've been discussing this issue for the past seven-plus years. Because, and we've had a lot of conversations about this in these chambers in terms of the operating costs, the pension costs associated with it, and whether or not the current structure that's in place is sustainable long-term. And I think, I believe I sent an email out recently to the city council with a community in Illinois that basically said, "We're getting out of the service, out of the business because we can't afford it. We'd love to provide it, but we just can't afford to provide the service anymore." And I think you'll start to see more and more of those smaller communities facing the same challenges. Adaptable and potential future growth. And I think part of that goes through going back and looking at that map is that, well, the Rockland District is approaching us today. We have this agreement right now with Lake Bluff. And should we be doing something different with Lake Bluff? Down the road, is there something, even if we do have this arrangement with Rockland, or Libertyville has the arrangement with Rockland, are there other opportunities that we have to do further sharing or consolidation with some of the other districts that are immediately adjacent to us? Integrate full-time, paid-on-premise, and volunteer. You know, one of the things that we've talked a lot about is the fact that the unsustainability characteristics of this is tied directly to the personnel costs. Personnel costs in the department represent roughly, you know, eighty, eighty-five percent. And that we have to look at doing things differently going forward that incorporate some of these paid-on-premise and volunteer people to be able to provide those high level of services with manageable costs going forward. And so I think there has to be a plan to be able to integrate that because if we're just talking about adding costs on top of our current costs, that doesn't accomplish anything and doesn't relieve any of the fiscal stress or pressures that we're experiencing today. Looking at opportunities to utilize resources more efficiently, whether that's stations, whether that's equipment. And going back to the map, there are four stations in very close proximity to one another. Do we need all four stations in the long run? Can we possibly consolidate some, do something different? And I think many of you know that the, and I think part of this proposal is taking into account that the Rockland Fire Protection District is right at the intersection of 176 and 41. And the long-range plans for improvement to that intersection have that building going away. Now, whether or not that happens in two years or twenty years is really dependent upon state funding and so forth. But eventually, that station will need to be relocated or removed entirely. Next one is model for best practices. I think that, you know, Lake Forest, we have always tried to look at doing things better, more efficiently, more effectively. And I think any type of proposal that we put together would need to make sure that it is flexible enough, that it could continue to evolve and develop so that we're constantly providing the best service and utilizing best practices that we can, not just to Lake Forest residents, but to any non-residents that we are servicing under contract. Must generate long-term savings. I think everybody will agree, we don't want to jump into this if it's A) going to cost us more, or B) just break even. This was one of the things that we looked at very closely when we went to central dispatch. And we looked at saving roughly $400,000 a year in that venture by contracting out rather than doing it in-house. And I think, it may not be $400,000, but I think we would need to really make it meaningful in terms of the savings that are coming back for the residents to really undertake this venture. And then finally, create a fair and equitable contract for Knollwood and Lake Bluff. While the contract, or the proposal request was only from Knollwood. Knollwood and Lake Bluff have very close relations, as does Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. And so I think part of the team will have to evaluate, how does that other piece of the Village of Lake Bluff and our current intergovernmental agreement with Lake Bluff come into play? And make sure that it is fair and equitable long-term. Because I don't think anybody wants to go into this contract feeling that one side won and one side lost because there will always be that animosity and that angst that will exist. And again, going back to an earlier bullet point, we're not looking to do this for one or two years. If we're going to do this, it will be a very long period of time that it would be in place. So those were the ones that we came up with. And you might have some other thoughts and some suggestions about other guidelines that we would want to place. But the staff recommendation would be to direct the city manager to put a team together that would prepare a proposal here over the next, say, ninety days, that would then come back to this city council for your review and approval prior to its official submittal to the Rockland Fire Protection District before the end of the year. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or I entertain any thoughts and suggestions you might have about the proposed guidelines that are up there.
Thank you, Bob. Very interesting communique from Knollwood. Obviously, we've been thinking about such things going back over twenty years. And it's finally, I suppose, even a productive step that at least people are reaching out. And we have several ideas to share with them about how to make this more productive, more efficient, and a sound, long-term answer to, at least in this case, fire services. And, yes, I think we ought to put a team together and try and develop a proposal because I think there is some areas of real potential here. But comments, thoughts, questions from council? Ideas on this, Ray?
Not so much an idea as a question. How is the Knollwood District handled from a police standpoint?
Currently, they receive service from the County of Lake Sheriff's Department.
And is that something we want to think about? Expanding the proposal to include? Does it make sense or not make sense? Are they two totally separate things? Or is there an overlap here we want to think about?
I would have to look into that because, keep in mind that Knollwood is not truly an entity outside of the Rockland Fire Protection District. It is unincorporated Lake County. Although, everybody refers to it as Knollwood. But as a legal entity, it is part of the County of Lake with the exception of the Fire Protection District. And so I'm not sure, even if we desire to provide them with police protection, how that would be structured because there's no boundaries, if you will.
I mean, this is certainly a contemporary model. My sense it would be something that would be evolutionary, not revolutionary. It also seems to me to provide the critical mass to somewhat provide the job security for our folks and others, you know, down the road. Two questions. Does it expand beyond that at some point? Secondly, and probably more importantly, where, what kind of stakeholder pushback will we get?
Two very good questions. Let me try and answer the first and before I forget the second. I think it is expandable. And now I'm just speaking on behalf of Bob Kiley. I think that the pressures that we are experiencing or people are experiencing throughout the state of Illinois. And I think that there are these types of conversations that are going to happen, if they're not already happening. And I think a, sort of the tip of the iceberg is that County of Lake is looking at developing a county-wide central dispatching operation. And one of the things you might recall that we learned when we started this venture is that they say you can't really consolidate fire or EMT or police service or anything until you have a consolidated dispatch operation. And so that was partly one of the reasons that we took the step that we did to join in with Highland Park and Lake Bluff and so forth on the central dispatching. I think that it's a novel idea in Illinois and certainly up in Lake County. But I think as the pressures grow and as there are examples, if this happens and it's successful, that that will breed more people looking at it, and I think it will grow. It may not be in my lifetime, but I think it's inevitable that it's going to happen because I just don't see communities being able to sustain the cost structure, if you will, of making it happen. Yes, I imagine that there will be some pushback because, as I said, Knollwood is an entity, does not exist. The reality is, though, it exists around the Rockland Fire Protection District. And I can appreciate the fact that if it goes away, do they lose their identity? And there are some individuals who live up there that have participated as a volunteer or maybe a paid-on-premise in the department. And they probably will think, "If this goes away, what happens to us?" And so I believe that there will be a lot of emotion tied up with that. And I think we have to acknowledge that as part of putting this proposal together. And balance that with what's best for us and our residents and understanding and appreciating what they're going through. And are we able to marry the two and achieve goals of both sides? Because, I mean, I wouldn't appreciate if somebody came in to try and take away the City of Lake Forest identity so I can really understand where some of that emotion will come from. I hope that answered the question.
So, from my perspective, if we're going to do this, one of the things that I think is essential is that whatever proposal we work out for Knollwood would have to be an identical proposal that goes to Lake Bluff. I can't imagine having two different types of agreements with those two entities. And I think you have to do both of them. It makes no sense to me to continue to do one without the other. And by that, I mean that if we don't do something with Knollwood, I think you have to think very seriously about what we're doing with Lake Bluff and whether or not we can realistically afford to continue providing professional fire services to them when, in reality, they don't pay any of the freight of the pension burden that that brings along with it. And I think that's a really big piece of whatever we do because the long-term sustainability of such expansion really relates to changing the ratio of firefighters to population supporting them. That's the only way it really does anybody any good. And I'm not sure that, you know, I mean, if we did such a thing, I could imagine that our fire department wouldn't grow any to do this, in which case, we have to have other ways of providing certain aspects of services for those communities as well as our own. And, you know, I looked at this for two years with our committee and the conclusion at the end of those two years was, one of two things, I think, has to happen to fire locally. It either has to grow, and by that I mean grow in coverage and financial support, not necessarily in terms of employees or personnel. In fact, not in terms of employees and personnel. Or it has to go because it's not really sustainable long-term for such a small community to have, you know, a full professional fire department with all the expenses associated with it. So we have to find a new model for providing fire services if we're going to continue to operate a professional fire service. I mean, that's my opinion, but it's based on spending a couple of years of looking at this and really seeing no other opportunity.
I totally agree with Alderman-Tack's analysis of this. And I think that if we're going to look at this, we do need to look at the Lake Bluff factor and make that part of this as well. And also, I would add something in these guidelines because we do all need to be, and you did a very good job, Bob, of expressing some of the sentiment out in Knollwood that goes along with this. And I know it's a very sensitive topic. And you did mention in model for best practices that we have to be sure this is the best solution for Knollwood as well and for that Rockland Fire Protection District. I would almost like to see that made a separate bullet point because I think that's important, that it be the best solution or we perceive it as being the best solution for them as well in terms of their fire service.
Okay.
I have a question on the staffing. Will you have access to their staff, in terms of their experience, compensation, pension obligations, and stuff that would be assumed by our city as well?
Well, I don't want to say the good news. The best news is they don't have pension obligations because they only have volunteer and paid-on-premise. So my understanding is they don't make pension payments right now. We do have a lot of access and data because there's crossover right now between Lake Forest firefighters and many of them, not many of them. Some of them work up in Knollwood on their off days. And so there's a lot of familiarity with us with them and them with us. And we've also hired a number of paid-on-premise who are also paid-on-premise up in Rockland. So there is an awful lot of understanding and awareness of how they do things up there, and they're aware of how we do things here in Lake Forest.
So when you do that, will you come up with a master plan in terms of service level, response times across this whole district? Is that part of the?
Yes. We would, because I think, you know, going back to one of the initial points, we want to have something that we can present to them that will say, "Response times, here's what's going to happen." So operationally, they know exactly what they're buying, if you will. But then we also have to recognize what's the impact and implications on us. And what does that mean for Lake Forest residents? Not unlike the analysis that we had to go through when we went to central dispatch.
I think one of the things that we have to just state outright is that we're not covering our costs in the operation of our fire department and our EMS. And that, this is all a great idea and it makes a lot of sense to share resources, but we're not covering our costs. And so it's not that I think the fire department should run at a profit. I don't believe that. It's a civil service and it's a service we provide to the populations we serve, whether it's Lake Forest or Lake Bluff or others. I think it's very important when we go down this road of analysis that one of the bullets has to be to understand the fully loaded cost, whether it includes pension or not, and what the real cost is per trip. And certainly, we can look at that on an average basis, but we're not covering our costs. And that is the key driver here. We have to understand on a fully loaded basis what it costs us. And I know we've spent a lot of time talking about this. And we can add the fixed asset cost per trip as well. But we don't have a means of collecting enough money per trip to pay for the service.
Right.
And I just, I think it's really important that we perhaps even have that as a bullet point here, that we have to do a full analysis on it and we have to go into it with eyes wide open. Because if we take this on, we're not going to generate more revenue. We're going to incur more cost, and that cost has to be covered.
Isn't that more of a part of your due diligence as opposed to? These seem to be the outcomes.
Perhaps. But if we talk service, I think we should also be talking covering the cost. Because to me, you can't talk about service and not talk about the cost of that service.
I agree with that.
So it could be in, as a part of any of these bullets, but I think it has to be explicitly stated and understood.
Okay. No, we'll look at the bullets and see if it can be expanded.
Bob, what's the timetable on this? I'm looking at the letter, I'm not seeing a...
Well, the letter did not specify a timetable. I think we will want to reach back to them and say what their thoughts are. I will say somewhat selfishly, I think we want to submit something and generally have a sense by the end of this year. Because if they say yes, it's going to have implications on our budget. And we want to make sure we're able to incorporate that into our budget process right after the first of the year. So this is not something that I think we would submit a proposal and then just let it languish out there for months because we don't want to get ourselves in a position where we can't do whatever we need to do operationally in the FY19 budget.
Well, thank you. Then, is it the sense of the council that we should proceed and ask staff to prepare a proposal and report back periodically on progress? And see where this leads? And I think the principles or guidelines that we've outlined here are fairly inclusive. I think there's the long-term costs and long-term savings that really be looked at hard to make sure that, you know, we don't have, you know, an error in our navigation through all this.
I do have one request. That it would probably be helpful, since any proposal is going to have to come back to this full city council before it is then formally submitted to Rockland, that we might want to have a liaison from the city council on this task force to make sure if we start moving in a direction that they don't feel the council is comfortable with, that they're there to provide the input.
As usual, Bob, you're always very thoughtful and on time, spot on. I have one in mind, sitting to my left, who spent a lot of time on this subject. And obviously, others can get involved as we go along. But not to put Alderman-Tack on the spot, but I think all that hard work, Randy, can be put to work.
Is that a congratulation handshake?
No good deed goes unpunished.
I just, I was just hoping he wasn't moving too far left.
Exactly. Okay, well, then I think it's the sense of the council, Bob. So proceed, and obviously, we'll go through checkpoints as we go along.
We will do so. And then if there's any other changes along the way before we get to the preparation of that proposal, we will definitely keep you in the loop. The second item on my agenda is actually to turn the podium over to Kathy Cerniak. I asked Kathy to do a community development 101 this evening with, I think primarily three topics, but she's available to answer any questions you might have. One is sort of what's going on in the community, updates on various development activities. Two is to give us an update on what those changes are that we've been making to our building permit processes, the report that we got here earlier this year. And then three is to give us an update on the updates to comprehensive plan and the process that we're looking at to proceed over the next couple of years with updating the city's comprehensive plan. So with that, Kathy?
I might also add, Kathy, I had a chance to visit with Kathy today on various things and told me she was going to be speaking tonight. And I said, "You know, Kathy, are you sure? Are you going to talk about all the many good things that are going on in Lake Forest? Because it seems so often at council and at the planning commission and others, you're leading a, you know, a complex discussions about tortuous minutiae of planning and zoning and whatnot. But taken together, there are some remarkably productive things for the life of this community going forward. And I hope you will illuminate us on that."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And my re-
And my response to the mayor was that I am the eternal optimist, so of course I will tell you all sorts of good things. So Bob asked me to talk about three things, and I will talk about all those in my own way. Maybe not the way he wanted me to talk about them. But I am going to update you on developments, talk about some initiatives that the department is doing, and then look ahead as well. And as the mayor said, there are some really exciting things going on in the community. I think all too often, boards and commissions, the city council, get bogged down in items that are very important, but sometimes we forget to step back and take a look. So I would like to propose that 2017 be known as the Year of the Crane. I believe that it's been many decades since you've been able to look at the Lake Forest skyline and see numerous cranes at numerous locations at various times. Laurel and Western Avenue, the Science Center, the hospital, McKinley Road across from the train station. I think that's a unique sight and something that is unusual to see in Lake Forest. Other good news, Deer Path Inn. The Deer Path Inn opened ahead of schedule in January 2016. And to talk about, just to give you a few numbers, after that first year of reopening, since January 1st, 2017, actually, January 1st until the end of July 2017, the first half of the year, the Deer Path Inn has had 5,000 room nights in their 57 rooms. The average stay is two and a half days. They have served in those six months 89,000 people food. On particularly busy Saturdays, they serve up to 950 people, including activities, events in the Windsor Room. Approximately 450 people eat something at the Deer Path Inn every day. The Deer Path Inn employs 126 people. They have been awarded AAA's Ford Diamond Award. Out of five points, they received a 4.8, and they were marked down because they don't have a pool, they don't have a spa, and they don't have any retail business in the hotel. The English Room itself also received the Diamond Award, and it's one of only 16 restaurants in the state that have received that award. And in those six months, on no less than 10 occasions, the Deer Path Inn has hosted families or couples for extended time periods who are looking for homes in Lake Forest. The Deer Path Inn has served really as an ambassador to our community. When people have stayed there, they've been able to meet residents who are dining in the Deer Path Inn. They have been treated royally by staff at the Deer Path Inn and have had the opportunity to eat, shop, and get to know the community. Another good news story, and this, I believe, shows up better on your screens than it does here. But 8:30 North Green Bay Road, a large estate, the Clement Stone Estate, which really has been in disrepair and has been neglected for over 10 years, was recently purchased by a local family for no other reason than they love the property and intend to clean it up, restore it to its glory, and really look to find a way for it to be shared with the community. So there are people interested, there are people engaged, there are people investing in Lake Forest today. Moving to talk more specifically about development activity. Today, as I stand here, there are 23 new homes in different phases of construction throughout the community. There are various other larger developments underway, and I'll touch on just a few of those. The hospital, we have issued a conditional certificate of occupancy to the hospital. They are completing final work within the buildings. They are removing the temporary parking lot, installing the wet meadow, which ideally should have been there a few weeks ago before it rained. They are enhancing the landscaping, both in the areas near the buildings and in the areas along the perimeters. And it's important to note that the city arborist, twice a year for the next five years, will walk that site, identify trees, vegetation that's failing to thrive, identify gaps that maybe need to be filled in. There was never the intent to hide the hospital. But if you look today, there are a number of oak trees that were planted 18 months, 24 months ago, that are really beginning to take root and take shape. The hospital is in the process of increasing the height on the berm at the south perimeter of the campus. This is specifically in response to requests from residents along Lane Lorraine. There is a support services building that is under construction and will be tucked into the berm and will not be visible from anywhere off the hospital site. Shortly, you will see directional signage going in throughout the campus as well as lighting. And interior upgrades are underway on both the 800 and 900 building. The hospital is on schedule to fully open. There will be some portions, some operations opening this fall, but to be fully open in the first quarter of 2018. Laurel and Western Avenue's redevelopment project, the former municipal services site. If you've driven down Western Avenue, you know the project is well underway. Just as a reminder, the project consists of three apartment buildings, which will have a total of 111 apartments, two condominium buildings, which will have a total of 42 condominium units, and 12 single-family homes. The apartment buildings are the buildings you see today that are framed up. The condominium buildings are not yet underway, and one of the single-family homes, this one in the northeast corner, is nearly complete and will be used as their showroom as they move forward with continuing to offer condos and single-family homes for sale. The first apartment building, well, pre-leasing for the apartments is set to begin in mid-October this fall. Apartment, occupancy of the apartment buildings is scheduled for the first quarter of 2018 with the Franklin Place apartment building being ready for occupancy as early as January. The other two buildings following closely behind that. The model home will be opening soon. Condo and home sales continue. To date, Focus Development reports that they are close to reaching the number of pre-sales they need to begin construction on the interior condominium building. And to date, they have sold one of the single-family homes. Focus Development does believe that once the model home is up and available, that they should see some increased activity. And once people can get inside the apartment buildings and some of the landscaping is finished, that should also attract greater interest. Tiff work is underway on Western Avenue. Western Avenue has been closed to traffic during the day for the past couple of weeks, on and off. There will continue to be work in the right-of-way, both Western Avenue and Laurel Avenue for about the next six weeks. The work includes new storm sewers, additional parking spaces, and road reconstruction. The oak tree is being very carefully monitored and very carefully watched. Two of our city arborists are involved in monitoring that tree along with our superintendent of Parks and Forestry, Chuck Myers. The city has brought in a consulting arborist, Mark Dunteman, who actually does consulting work all over the world on significant heritage trees. Some of his stories are really incredible. But he has been involved with investigating, monitoring, studying the oak at the Laurel Avenue site since 2007, when the city began to market the property. The landscaping plan for the development is being refined, and lighting and directional signage for the property has recently been submitted, and we will be moving forward with seeing some of that implemented. Market Square, it's the hidden work that's going on right now. The north alley, this picture, you're actually looking east, standing on Bank Lane. And this new structure here is part of the structure that will provide new amenities, an elevator, which has not previously been available, which will really enhance the viability of this Class A office space on the entire second floor. That area was gutted, new offices, new restrooms, up-to-date wiring. That work is underway and should attract some interesting office tenants. As you look down the alley, you see the back of Your Heart's Bakery and Einstein's. And Einstein's will shortly be opening up the back of their store so that their customers can take advantage of seating in the back alley. And the intent is that as this work is completed, that this becomes a very unique, open-air market area, particularly if some of these businesses, Kittles and others, open up an entrance in some storefront windows along the alley. This work, unlike the Deer Path Inn, was not completed on time, but it really faced a number of challenges, most of them having to do with comment. When L3 came to the city and we began talking about what utilities were located in this alley, to be honest, there was no one that had a clue. And the more they dug, the more they found, and what was back there was really quite antiquated and required some very significant upgrades. That work is done now. I mentioned the work in the second-floor offices. Life safety improvements are still going on throughout the square. Some of the spaces that front on Bank Lane, some of the buildings to the south of the square are now undergoing upgrades. And as I mentioned, amenities, improved restrooms, public restrooms that will be part of the elevator tower, elevator stairs, tables in the center, Greensward area, chairs. All of those are beginning to take shape. There are also, as you are aware, developments occurring on McKinley Road. The condominium building under construction directly across from the train station has 14 units. Further north on Wisconsin are three condominium units. The Plan Commission will soon be seeing some further details on the McKinley Road redevelopment area plan, the former cultural corridor. And more detail will be added to this master plan that was previously approved by the city council. Importantly, the Laurel and Western Avenue projects, the work going on in Market Square and this project, will all converge as they get completed. We will have more residents in our central business district. We will have more office space occupied by office workers in our central business district, which will in turn provide more vitality, more customers for restaurants, service businesses, and retail businesses in our central business district. So all of those pieces happening together are really important and are really something that I think the city has worked long and hard to achieve. Moving to some other areas, Willow Lake, a development out off of Field Drive in Conway Park. Although this development got off the ground at a bad time, it really is now developing as a neighborhood. It's interesting to see that some of the neighbors are now coming together and wanting to do, have some discussions about landscaping, preservation of open space, upgrades to the roads. So a neighborhood really is forming out in that area. Lake Forest College recently completed, or almost has completed, the replacement of the artificial turf to assure a winning football season. The $43 million Science Center is nearing completion and is scheduled to be open in the, in January of 2018. Once this new building is open, the two older science wings behind this building will then be closed, construction will get underway, and the entire science complex is scheduled to be open in fall of 2018 for the beginning of school. Updated laboratories, facilities for students, faculty, really a way for a small liberal arts college to respond to the interest in science, math, technology. Looking forward, this just identifies some of the areas where projects are being talked about or have been approved and are getting underway, from as small as the relocation and expansion of paddle courts at the Knollwood Club, recognizing that that is a growing sport and a way to keep people at the club and attract all ages. To projects such as Sunset, really working to enhance their store, enhance their offerings, really enhance the atmosphere, particularly as we look to the opening of Mariano's to the south later this year. And the city will benefit from the opening of Mariano's. We will receive a portion of the sales tax revenue as a result of our intergovernmental agreement with Bannock Burn. A couple of the key projects looking forward. The Oak Knoll Woodlands subdivision is located west of Wachigan Road, north of Conway Road, at the edge of Conway Golf Course. This is a development that was approved by the council probably 18, 24 months ago. Improvements are in, the road is in. This development was actually tied up in litigation. There was a neighbor that filed litigation and challenged the development of the property. Thanks to the work of our city attorneys, this case was recently settled, like within the last 30 days. And we are doing some final site inspections, and those 16 lots should be able to hit the market soon. Wesley Farm subdivision was recently, or was fairly recent. It's been talked about for a long time, but it recently received final approval. The developers, William Ryan Homes, are moving forward. In fact, I have the plat downstairs, Mr. Mayor, for you to sign, as I mentioned. We are waiting for some final review of documents from the city attorney's office. Impact fees have been paid. If you look out there, I don't think you can see it here, but there's actually some equipment staged on the site. They are ready to get underway with site work. And just as a reminder, that development includes 26 lots that will ring an open space that will be planted as a non-producing orchard, as an aesthetic orchard, and eight additional lots that will be custom homes. The model homes for the 26 lots are before the building review board currently for approval. So this developer is ready to get in there, ready to begin work. And then just to the south, the other side of the pond, Lake Forest Open Lands owns a 22-acre site. Last month, this was before the Plan Commission and received final approval. This development proposes nine lots in this area. The developer has some final refinements to make on the engineering plans in the plat, and then this will be coming forward to the city council for final approval. So over 60 acres in this area is proposed for development with a significant amount of open land that will be preserved in perpetuity. In this case, 17 acres of this 22-acre property will be preserved. There will be trails linking not only these developments, but also linking to the open lands further to the south. These developments offer a variety of lot sizes, offer a mix of maintenance-free and non-maintenance-free properties. So in direct response to some of the comments we heard during the strategic planning session, we see multifamily units, apartments, condos, and single-family lots of various sizes and product types being offered and being constructed right now. Before the Plan Commission, this Wednesday night, there is a proposal or a request for a special use permit to allow a bank. Banks are special uses as our drive-through facilities. Chase Bank proposes to locate on the site of McDonald's. The McDonald's building will be torn down, a new building will be constructed. The Plan Commission will be looking carefully at the technical criteria for special use permits, but my guess is that they will also look at and challenge Chase a bit, asking what they can bring to the community and what they can offer to the community. We have received numerous calls. The callers have simply said, as we all know, there are enough banks in that area, and we'd really like to see something different. So it'll be an interesting discussion. The city certainly does have to base decisions on special use criteria, so I expect this will be before you in the next 60 to 60 days or so. will be before you in the next 60 to 60 days or so. The proposed Waterway Car Wash, retail store and gas station on the southeast corner of Waukegan and Everett Road, is still being worked on by the petitioner. Waterway has been quiet for a number of months. They have been working with ComEd, another situation where they're working with ComEd to vacate an easement to allow potentially some reconfiguration of the property, specifically to try and address some of the acoustical concerns that were raised. So whether this will be back before the Plan Commission in September or not, I don't know, but it is still active, and Waterway is trying to respond to the concerns that have been raised. The Saunders Road area, which is an area located between Conway Farms and the Tollway, there are a number of five-acre lots. Those lots are zoned for one-acre properties. There is one subdivision before the Plan Commission right now proposing a standard four-lot subdivision of that property. That area is encumbered by wetlands and certainly impacts from noise from the Tollway. And then finally, the Route 60 area. The Amberly Woods property, I know we have talked about the Amberly Woods property for a long time. There is a new owner of the second condominium pad. They have developed a sales model, and they are actively marketing, trying to reach their pre-sale number in order to begin the second condo pad. Smith Capital is continuing to talk about opportunities on the northwest quadrant of that property, eight and a half acres, considering hotels, restaurants, service businesses, perhaps a multifamily residential. The Jenko Group owns one of the few remaining properties in Conway Park, and they tell us that soon they will be before the city. That property is one of the larger properties in Conway Park, nine and a half acres. And Jenko likely will come forward with a proposal for some type of mixed use on that property, consistent with the zoning in this area. And finally, the Bears, located just to the east of the Municipal Services Building. They are looking to expand some practice facilities on property that they own, just to the east of the Peyton Center. This project is consistent with the special use permit that they have, is consistent with the zoning that's currently on the property. In fact, the property is zoned for an office building, so without any special approvals, the Bears or someone else could come forward to build a three-story or four-story office building on that parcel. What's proposed is two practice fields, some other training facilities, some additional parking, and some small maintenance and supporting facilities as well. This development will require a significant removal of trees. We have worked, the Bears have wanted to involve their partners. We recently had a meeting with representatives of Lake Forest, Lake County Forest Preserve and Open Lands. The Army Corps is involved in the project, as is the Department of Natural Resources. So there is a lot of discussion, certainly providing enough detention on-site, mitigating any wetlands that will be impacted, preserving the high-quality wetlands, and assuring the maintenance of a buffer. In this case, along the east side, the railroad tracks are beyond the fields just to the east. So certainly paying attention to potential for impacts on properties further to the So that is in the works. Again, a number of approvals. The city is one of the approval bodies, but it does not require any, no request for variances and no request for any special approvals. Just a quick review of some of the activity levels in the department. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, building permit activity has stayed pretty steady above 300, which gets us to our normal permit levels each year between about 3,500 and Demolitions continue to be approved. I think we hear often from real estate agents that the city does not approve demolitions, and that perhaps is a bit of misinformation. But here's an updated map that's showing demolitions that have occurred since, I believe, fiscal year 2012. Board and commission activity since the beginning of the fiscal year has remained steady, about six to seven petitions a year. Home inspections, which occur in conjunction with the sale of property, had a little bit of a bump in June. I think we were up to about 49. July, we dropped a little bit to about 26. If the first week in August is any indication, I think we completed 12 home inspections in the first week of August. So it's a number that continues to bounce around. It doesn't directly correlate to the issuance of transfer stamps, however, it's pretty close. Usually, we're getting calls for home inspections a day or two before sale, sometime even in the morning before a closing. Just some initiatives, the Housing Trust Fund Board, the newly constituted board has met once. They will be meeting again at the end of the year, the end of the month. And I expect that Chairman Schoenharder will want to come before the city council in September to give you an update and talk with you about entering another agreement with Community Partners for Affordable Housing, talking about some partnerships that they're exploring with the hospital, with Lake Forest College, with Lake Forest Academy, and some oversight they're doing with the affordable units at Laurel and Western Avenue and on McKinley. We have initiated, we have started up the septic system certification program that came out of the council's work last spring. We sent out just about 80 letters. We've actually gotten a very good and very positive response. We've received several certifications already. We've received calls from a couple of people who do not have septics, and so we've been able to clear up our records, and a couple of calls from people who are asking about the location of sewers. So it's early, so far so good. We are, we have set November 1st as the annual certification date. Obviously, since this is a new program, if we need to work with people and provide a grace period this first year, we will certainly do that. With the departure of Susan Kelsey, we have re-looked at that position and retitled it as a business advocate, really thinking that what we need to do is focus on relationship building, both with corporations out at Conway Park, as well as businesses within both of our business districts. We've done a number of interviews. I think we have focused in on a good candidate. We'll be trying to solidify that, and we'll probably look at this as somewhat of an interim program, see how it develops, and also see how it ties in with the comprehensive plan Process improvements, you'll remember that first quarter of 2017, the council directed that a consultant be brought in to review the community development department and the processes. A report was issued. That report has been reviewed by all the boards and commissions. Most of the boards and commissions have held separate workshops to talk specifically about that report, to talk about how they can modify some of their approaches or their processes. Each of the boards and commissions have reviewed their applications and their checklists and have made some modifications. We are working under the direction of Elizabeth Halleb in the Finance and IT Department through the software upgrade process, and that process has actually moved along much quicker than I thought, but we're looking forward to seeing some demos of some of the selected softwares in the next month or two. As everyone in our department was interviewed about a need for software, a request that kept coming up was to have some interface with our customers, to allow customers to, homeowners to go in and check at any time the status of their permit. And often, we just communicate with contractors, and by the time the homeowner gets involved, they think the permit was turned in three months ago and we got it two weeks ago. But to really have transparency in that process. So I think a number of the companies that we'll bring in will have different products to offer us that can help us in that way. I mentioned the updates to the application and checklist. Pre-application meetings, one thing we read in that report was that pre-application meetings, those who do them, those who know to ask for them, whether big projects or small, whether before they submit for permit or whether before they come to a board or commission, those that do them have an easier time. Staff is trying to be more proactive and encouraging people who don't often ask for those to take the time to do it. We do believe it does save time, it builds relationships, it gets questions answered upfront, so we're trying to push that. There's a committee within our community development department that is working on some updates, reworking of the website again. There's a ton of information there, but just understand, how can we make it most accessible to people and most understandable? And to date, the city staff has held six free classes for our stakeholders. To date, the stakeholders have really been contractors, architects, and the classes have focused on technical issues, technical and exciting issues like wall bracing, the energy code, energy conservation. As we look to the fall, we're looking at covering topics like demolitions, because we have heard there's a lot of confusion about when is a demolition appropriate and what is the process, and just classes on process in general. Working particularly with real estate companies to see if they want us to come to their office or hit particular topics. But we've had, at the six classes, we've had pretty good attendance, between 15 and 20 people, not all from our community, some from outside. After we did the first wall bracing class, which was a recent change in the national code, and we offered it because plans were coming in without wall bracing information, after staff, our lead plans examiner, Mike Whalen, offered the first class, he actually got calls asking for him to hold a second class. So we provide light snacks and people come, and in the end, it makes our job easier and allows us to be more responsive when we're reviewing plans. Comprehensive plan update, we did receive approval in this budget year to begin the comprehensive plan update. We believe it's an 18 to 24-month process. The framework for the comprehensive plan will start with the strategic plan. The process will be first data collection and analysis. We will work closely with our GIS staff from the GIS consortium. We will benefit from work they've done with other communities on comprehensive plans. We also plan to bring in a consultant to assist us with graphics, with analysis. We propose that the city manager appoint topic-specific advisory groups, so we're not taking something directly to the Plan Commission, but involving appropriate parties and small groups to advise staff, advise the consultant, as we begin to prepare drafts, and then to move that forward to early community engagement opportunities. Not wait till this gets to the Plan Commission for public hearings, but reach out and really target, as we did with some earlier community engagement meetings, really target specific stakeholders on specific issues. Comprehensive plan amendments, updates do require review by the Plan Commission and public hearings, and then any changes will ultimately come to the city council. And very quickly, the study areas would really align with the chapters in the comprehensive plan. Some modification, we would likely start with housing and land use. Lake Forest is fundamentally residential community, so it makes sense to start at that topic, understand what we have, where the gaps may be, and how we could best meet those. Moving on to the business districts, development, redevelopment opportunities, and then using the information gained in these discussions, as we talk about transportation, infrastructure, sustainability, and then make sure it all ties together with a focus on community character, preservation, and quality of life. So we're not sitting around doing nothing. There's a lot happening at the department level, there's a lot happening in the community. The community is growing, changing, preserving, and always planning for the future, and planning not just for tomorrow, but looking 50 years out. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. That was a tour de force. No one ever thought the grass was growing underneath the community development department. And I think the comprehensive plan update is going to be a very interesting process over many months, as we look at sort of the evolution of, in one sense, of American society, Chicagoland, and then within the boundaries of Lake Forest, at what the trends are and some of the things that we need to pick and choose from, to, as you say, enhance the quality of the community life and the community character. Comments, questions, suggestions from council?
Well, I just have a quick one. Kathy, I know you've been up there for a long time, and this doesn't fall directly under the, under your department, but in addition to all these wonderful things that are happening in the community, we also have the McCormick Ravine restoration that's ongoing and set to open, I think, what is it, this next spring possibly? And also the Fort Sheridan restoration that's going on, and the Middle Fort Bridge that's going to open bike paths to the west. So just a, I know that you're not directly involved in those, but those are wonderful developments that are also occurring within the boundaries of our community.
If no other questions, Kathy, thank you for your 10-minute presentation.
Thank you.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Well done. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Public Works Committee chaired by Alderman Randy Tack and Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works, with regard to an award of bid and approval of agreements for the repair of the South Beach Access Road. Looks like Michael Thomas.
Okay, then. I was gonna say, I'm exhausted, so I'm gonna have to turn this over, but basically, the Public Works Committee is submitting four separate but related items for your consideration. All these items have to do with problems in the first ward.
It's not our fault. Thank you for helping us out.
First ward happens to be falling into the lake, but.
Only someone.
Anyway, I'll have Mike go over the details. The first item that we're asking you to consider is basically approval of a bid for the remediation and reconstruction of the South Beach Access Road. The second item that's related to that is a, sort of a, an add-on approval to hire AECOM to provide inspection services during the course of the reconstruction of the South Beach Access Road. And the third item is related to approving a proposal to obtain plans for landscape reconstruction following the reconstruction of the South Beach Access Road. The fourth item is related to the other end of the bluff, the North Beach Access Road, and that relates to damage sustained in the recent storm and the request for some add-on services to a previously approved development plan by AECOM. So with that being said, Mike will go over the details of each individual one.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chairman Tack, Alderman Mayor, members of the city council. This evening's staff is presenting the Public Works Committee's recommendation for approval of the South Beach Access Road to take the city council and the community through the process. This is the same process we follow with all of our construction projects. AECOM has been working on the design since March 20th. They completed it in early July. We placed the project out to bid on July 3rd. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on July 11th. All contractors were required to attend if they're interested in submitting a bid. We had the bid opening then on July 18th, and that evening, we met with the Public Works Committee. So it was a very quick turnaround, but we were very pleased with all the companies that showed up and submitted bids. They were competitive bids. All of those companies are companies that we have worked with or know very well, so we're very comfortable bringing the recommendation to you this evening. As Chairman Tack noted, the Public Works Committee recommendation was to go with the low bid, Lake County grading. They've performed not work for us. They've performed not work for us recently, but obviously worked throughout the county. They've done some very significant projects on the Illinois Toll Road, and this truly is their bread and butter. This is right up their alley, and in their world, pretty straightforward, so that is good to know for us. Secondly, AECOM, they'll provide the basic inspection and testing services for the lagging wall especially, some of the infrastructure that will go in. We will have our engineering assistant, one of our engineering assistants there on a daily basis, to manage the standard construction issues that arise, but AECOM will be there to inspect the things that they designed that we've got to make sure are installed properly. In addition to that, like any construction project, we're going to request city council approval for 10% contingency. Anytime you excavate, for example, Fourth Ward Storm Sewer, project's going very well, but we have a contingency with that project. We have a contingency with Mayflower Bridge, just in case something were to come up. As Chairman Tack noted, we're also recommending approval of the design for a restoration plan by Mariani Landscape. Mariani Landscape has, as one of their employees, Cliff Miller. Cliff worked with the Forest Park Project Board and the architects out on the East Coast to design all the landscape at Forest Park. He also developed a master landscape plan, restoration plan for Forest Park, to include the south end and the north end. So we thought it would be important that the ideas and the themes and the ideas that are in this management plan be carried through in the final restoration of the South Beach Access Road. Included in the contract with Lake County Grading is simply what we refer to as seed and blanket. When they leave, they'll put down seed, straw, blanket, that's it. What we're hoping for out of this plan is obviously some more details and more specifics on how we should proceed. We don't know if that's going to lead into something where we need to actually go out to bid, or is it something where we will actually purchase the plants in-house and plant them? We're not sure yet. We've got to let Cliff and his team pursue this. The timetable, if city council approves the low bid this evening, Sally and her department in Parks and Rec will send letters out to the boaters, letting them know that beginning on September 5th, the South Beach Access Road will close. Until the project is completed, we're hoping that that will be opened up prior to Thanksgiving. Secondly, during the week by, or I should say, by the 18th of August, we'll have all the contracts, bonds, insurance documents, all of those will be passed between ourselves and the low bidder. We will have, as we always do, a pre-construction meeting to review the logistics of what we expect. One of the things I want to highlight, this project, as we said, is lowering the road anywhere from five to nine feet. It's going to equate to approximately 10,000 yards of material coming out, approximately 500 semis. It'll be taking the route of Deer Path, Sheridan, Wesley 41. So it's a lot of material coming out. It's going to be a change. This is, in our world, this is a large project. And then finally, we are set and would like to begin, as I noted, on September 5th, the day after Labor Day, with substantial completion by the 17th of November. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Mike, I might just make a comment. I was looking back, obviously, as a Word One Alderman. This has been very much, this is a really important project in our community, and I was looking back, it was really not, and we just started this work just a little bit over a year ago, and it's impressive to me that our process was incredibly thorough, but we got it done in a pretty timely way to be able to do this work. I think we're probably lucky we didn't have to, well, I don't know. Anyway, I guess it could have been worse is where I'm going with this, although that's certainly not what, you know, in other words, closing the road or something, and that would have been a disaster for this summer. So I'm thrilled. I'm pleased with the process. I was pleased to be part of it in terms of the bluff stability analysis work group. I think it's a solid process. I was delighted to see how many people bid on this. I think that's always good news, and we have a lot of people interested in these projects, probably because they know our checks don't bounce, so that's good to know. And so, well done. We are looking forward to seeing this done, of course, and hoping to meet the Thanksgiving timetable. I know that some of this is contingent on the kind of weather we have in the fall. We recognize that, but let's hope we can get it done, and good luck.
One of the reasons we're able to meet the timetables, we really, the city council agreed to hire the engineering firm that knows this type of issue very well. AECOM is what they do, this is what they do on a daily basis, and they work with a lot of the communities up and down the North Shore. So as I had noted with the contractor, that this is their bread and butter and very straightforward, and with AECOM and their engineering firm, to them, this is very straightforward as well. So we're very pleased to have them on board.
One area I did raise the question with Mike and Chairman Tack was the landscape plan and the cost of it, because it struck me, $11,000 for a landscape plan to tell us, you know, what plantings we need, whether that's reasonable, and unfortunately, we did not have the bidding process to, you know, vet that in terms of what competition, but I'd like to expand on that, that, you know, you're comfortable with the number, you're comfortable with not putting it out for bid, you're comfortable with Cliff, and now he's with Mariani. So I'm wondering if you could expand to make sure that we're getting appropriate services for the dollars we're spending for that.
As I noted, the key to this, quite frankly, is Cliff Miller. Cliff knows this park very well. He knows the landscape plan and design very well. Again, he was the author of the natural landscape management plan. So if Cliff actually, he had his own business previously to selling out to Mariani, if he still had his own business, the recommendation would be for P. Clifford Miller. He knows this material very, very well. I would not feel comfortable recommending anyone else on this, to be completely frank. I spoke with Chuck Myers, our superintendent of Parks and Forestry. He has signed up many landscape plans, just to give you an idea of cost. The Senior Center, we did a landscape plan for them a handful of years ago, $8,000. Northwestern Avenue, project that is substantially completed, was $20,000 for the landscape plan. Gorton was 15. West Side Train Station 3, and then the South Park Master Plan was 14. So in speaking with Chuck, he and I feel very comfortable that the $11,000 is a good number, and is well within the range, especially with the services that they're gonna, that he is gonna, he and his team are gonna provide. We need to work on that bluff pretty quickly alongside the contractor, and there's going to be some plant material that we hopefully are going to be able to transplant, that is very good, high-quality plant material that he will identify and that we can transplant throughout Forest Park to save it before we really start, I hate to say, tearing things apart.
And I take it he's a good one to work with the contractor and with AECOM to make sure that the plantings we're doing are going to reinforce and support the bluff, not create more problems with the bluff in future.
That is correct. So one of the very first things is that AECOM will share the CAD files, the engineering files, with Mariani and Cliff Miller, so they'll know specifically how this road is going to be reconstructed and what material is going to be placed. So Cliff and his team will be able to work off of that. So yes, without question, it is going to be a team effort. There will be communication between AECOM, Lake County Grading, city staff, and Cliff Miller and his team on a regular basis. So our hope, again, is that he comes up with something that we then internally make the decision as to whether or not we can plant this ourselves in-house, or whether we need to contract it out. And if we contract it out and have to bid it, we'll bring that back to city council for approval.
Mike, I want to come back to one question that we have talked about before, and the other that I didn't think to ask before. It's about stress along the bluff. By lowering the road, we are moving the points of stress in that, along the South Beach Access Road. And I know we've talked about this before, but I would like you to address that, along with a bigger question of stress along all of the system of bluffs. And we can stay on Lake Forest, but I think it's important that we understand that this is a system. This is not two access roads, it's part of a system. And I think, I haven't really thought about it quite that way. I know that in the Public Works Committee, we've looked at many maps and studied some of the engineering and have gotten some lessons, but I would ask you to address the local stress changes, and more broadly, if there's anything from the recent hundred-year rains that we've experienced, just in general, what's changed?
Well, that's a very, your second question's a very, very good point, and we have seen that on some of the ravines so far. We visited a site this morning at Lake and Woodbine, where there was some significant damage done to that ravine. Further north on Lake Road near the cemetery, there's a homeowner that has a ravine adjacent to the cemetery where there's some significant damage as well. So those heavy flows in a very short period of time, if that water is not managed correctly, which in the case of the ravine adjacent to the North Beach Access Road, it was way too much for the 16-inch pipe that we had. That then overtops and it begins to erode the sides. And a very similar thing happened at Lake Woodbine, the same thing happened up north near the cemetery. So water management is nine-tenths of this whole thing. To be able to manage the water properly and to get it to the lake without it hitting the sides and eroding the sides is significant. With regards to South Beach Access Road, they, by lowering this road, they're going to be addressing the slope. It is currently not a two-to-one. They will make it at least a two-to-one slope, and they'll be removing the material, the fill material, that actually is moving. They'll bring it down to the clays that are very solid, which in my role is going to be very interesting to see how they install this water main, because the clay is, as they took cores, is very solid clay. But the water main needs to be reinstalled, the storm sewer needs to be reinstalled. But they're going to be removing the material that actually is moving and properly grade this so it can, so the slope itself can be retained, and then with the plantings, that just adds additional security to it. That will be on the east side. The west side, there will be some sloping as well, but again, with plantings, we, that side will be held up just as good. But in the end, water is what damages all of this, whether we're talking roads, whether we're talking ravines, water management, storm water management is truly the key to all of this.
Thank you.
When you're talking about replantings and retaining some of the plantings, I assume you're talking about some of those newly installed plantings that are on the west side of that access road? Didn't we just replant a significant portion of that? Will we be able to save a lot of those plantings?
The plantings that are further north near the gate, the project is not in that area, so we won't be touching that area. As you drive further down, there are some new trees that we planted. Those will be transplanted. But it's interesting, because Cliff has already walked the bluff a couple of times, and he's noted some existing plants that are of high caliber, and he has said, these are important for us to root before they are taken away in a semi. These are important for us to dig out, retain, and plant elsewhere. They're high quality. So again, it follows, it follows the management plan that was designed for Forest Park, and I think it's just being good stewards and thinking ahead. We could easily come in with a backhoe and dig it all out, but we're thinking rationally that there's some opportunities here to save some very good plant material, and we're going to try and do so in the next month.
Well, indeed. Other comments, questions from the council? At this time, is there anyone in the audience that has a question or would like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, we should move to approve the action items, the four action items described that are necessary to repair the South Beach Access Road as follows. Number one, award a bid to Lake County Grading in the amount of $956,759. Number two, acknowledge the exception noted in Section 9.0K of the city's purchasing directive, and approve an agreement with AECOM to provide construction engineering services in the amount of $42,500. And number three, approve a 10% contingency, or $99,925, to be used for any unforeseen construction and/or additional inspection issues during the project. And number four, approval of design services by Mariani Landscaping to provide a landscape restoration plan in the amount of $11,185. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second? Thank you. This is a roll call vote. Please call the roll.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tack?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
AECO, your name is, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an approval of a change order for design and surveying services for the ravine adjacent to the North Beach Access Road, and Michael Thomas is still standing.
Requesting additional dollars. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this evening's request is to request additional dollars, a change order for the design services for a North Beach Access Road. City council has previously approved design services for the North Beach, we continue to refer to as the North Beach Access Road. It is the ravine adjacent to the North Beach Access Road. But with the storm that came at us on July 12th, this ravine, as I noted, others had significant damage. This picture actually was taken after our streets staff went ahead and installed three semis of about six or eight-inch stone, and we cut the sheeple. This is, this is a very good picture showing the sheeple wall. Whoops, that wasn't supposed to happen. The sheeple wall on either side of the pipe, that was a complete wall, and again, you can tell by the size of the pipe, how small it is, that it could not handle the very heavy flow. The water was coming around that sheeple wall, and that's what caused the significant erosion adjacent to the roadway. So this is, as we met with Bill Weaver from AECOM, he said, you've got to open that channel up. The water has got to stay down in the ravine, so I suggest, in the short term, remove that sheeple wall, open up portions of it to allow the flow. So with that, back on March 20th, as I noted, city council approved approximately $50,000 to proceed with and provide the city with the design for the ravine. AECOM, their focus initially, obviously, was the South Beach Access Road, and to get that completed. There is also monitoring and testing that city council approved for the Forest Park area. That was installed in early spring, and that is going on as we speak. And they had done a basic survey of this ravine after the storm on the 12th. There was significant, significant damage, and I'm going to potentially embarrass our consultant who is there this evening, but this is his quote, and I think it was, I think it was very, a very good quote. I'll read it to everybody. But this, essentially, he said, "The flood event that occurred on the 12th has changed the character of the ravine, with significant damage and failure to structures, slopes, and has dramatically increased erosion in extent of channel incising." So it was significant, it did significant damage to the ravine. Bill Weaver and his team have spent now a couple days, and it's a very small ravine, walking through this ravine, and came back with a proposal for the change order. There needs to be some additional work done to develop this design. What is different with this design is that this design, when it is completed, needs to be approved by the Illinois EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers. So as much as us at the staff level would really like to recommend to city council that we get this design completed, we get this repair done, we're going to have to work through a bureaucracy to get approval from both of those agencies. What Bill Weaver and his team are proposing to do is to develop a pre-design and to go to both agencies and ask for their tentative approval based on an emergency basis, for them to do a quick review, and if so, they receive a tentative approval, then they will proceed quickly with final design. These are just some pictures that Bill and his team took of the ravine. They're somewhat hard to see, but they truly are showing significant erosion in the ravine. The property just to the north of this ravine, they too had some very significant damage done to their ravine, to a point where their patio is hanging in there, literally just hanging. The other, on this one, the post-storm on the far-right picture, difficult to see, but you can see the curb and the gutter is beginning to separate from the roadway, and that is telling us that the base is beginning to be undermined, and that is why we came in with the heavy stone to try and provide some support for that. But that is a very significant issue, so we need to, we need to address. But that is a very significant issue, so we need to, we need to address. So as, as was noted in the proposal that is included in your packet, the change order will include some additional surveying. There will be some geotechnical engineering services, some borings that are going to need to be done. Bill and his team are looking at various structures that are going to need to be installed that weren't going to need to be installed with the base design. And that in and of itself is going to take some various sheet piling, is going to take some additional design efforts. So AECOM is requesting additional dollars for this design and staff is recommending City Council approval. The dollars for this would come from the $113,000 savings that we have with the South Beach Access Road. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any thoughts, questions, observations?
I do have a question, I'm sorry. I know that you and I have been talking a little bit via email about Stormwater Management Commission, and that was just a dead end. There was no, no assistance available from them?
So far, no. We have spoken to them on the South Beach Access Road, I spoke to them twice. I have not yet spoken to them specifically about the North Beach. I'll, I'll call Mike Warner at Lake, Lake County Stormwater Management. One of the interesting things will be if there are dollars available, my guess is that it will be via a grant. And grants will take a good amount of time, but we will, I will at least pursue that and see if there are options. We need to get AECOM through this design period, in staff's perspective, by mid-October. I'm pushing them to try and get this design to a point where they can turn and come back and say, "We think this project's going to cost you X." We need to know that by mid-October. That's when we finish entering all of our capital improvement requests. We filter them through our finance director and city manager. Then the plan you see at your November meeting has what we essentially can afford as a city. So it's important to us that we know whether this is a $500,000 project or a $1.2 million project. And we need to know that soon, but nobody's going to want, I'm not going to want AECOM to put a number on it until they get down, farther down with a design. They need, they need to get a good idea of what this design's going to include. So, but yes, I will, I will pursue.
Because I did have a commissioner from Lake County down at the beach and showed that area to him. And he was the head of the Stormwater Management Commission, the elected official, and did encourage me to reach out to the city to suggest that you contact Stormwater Management and him if need be, that there could possibly be some assistance available because that's a ravine. So I think it's a little different than
Road.
The South Beach Access Road. Because that is, that's a ravine and it has to do with stormwater. So I really encourage you to pursue that. Money's money.
Absolutely. Yeah. Very good point, I will.
Thank you. Good, good thought. Michelle?
One other quick, perhaps, point. The ravines are, are undergoing a lot of change. We're witnessing this real time in the last 12 months. I, I think that, you know, AECOM's doing a great job, and I know that they are very highly recommended. And I would encourage that they take a more holistic view in, in a way, without increasing the cost of looking at the system. And that might be the areas just to the north and south of, the north and south roads and ravines around the beach, but it might be also more holistic. And I just, I, I feel like they, they know this well, this, this area, this region. And I, I would encourage that they take a more comprehensive view of what they're working on and be collaborative. And I'm sure that they do this regardless, but I would hope that we would get a little bit more for the dollars that we're putting to work here.
Michelle, you may remember, though, that we, we did work with them on the bluff. So interestingly, when we were thinking of the whole system, we were very aware of the ravine element, we just weren't aware of it, of the absolute urgency which the recent flood event has made quite clear. But we actually have, I mean, it's reassuring to me, at least, knowing that, how vulnerable to these water, water events we are. So we, we do have a plan. We have monitoring going on in terms of the erosion at the bluff and so on. So I imagine, I, I like the idea of thinking the system. I think that's really smart, and the system there definitely has points of vulnerability at both ends. I think we've done a good job with the park, but who knows? You know, that, 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 anything can be vulnerable with, with enough water. So, but I think it's, I think it's good. I think, you know, I've worked with Bill, I think that's the way they work. I think they, but I think asking specifically to talk to us that way and to educate us about how these things are interrelated, I think makes all the sense in the world. And Bill's here, he's hearing it, Mike's hearing it, I think it's smart.
Well, you know, to, to build on the Alderman's comments, we have restored some ravines recently in this community, and wasn't the city involved in some of the restoration? Was Cemetery Ravine?
Cemetery and McCormick.
And McCormick. So, you know, we're in the process with, working with ravines and restoring them. So might there be some people who've worked on those restorations that we should involve with this? Because it's not just a question of transporting water from point A to point B, but it's also a question of how do we create a healthy ravine ecosystem and all of that? And, you know, I, I know that we've got this structure of a road that's coming right next to the ravine, and that's probably a priority, stabilizing that. But I, I wonder if we can tap into some of the expertise that we used for, from McCormick and the Cemetery Ravine to just sort of consult on this, on a formal or informal basis?
One of the things that we are about to complete is we had an intern in our water and sewer section do a very comprehensive inventory of the ravine system. And he's just about to finish up, but he has walked this entire summer all of the ravines and has taken pictures. He met with Lake County Stormwater Management officials, and they told him how he should evaluate and grade various structures, pipes, anything we could find in the ravine. And from what I am told, we're going to see the finished project next week, but it's a very comprehensive project. So from our standpoint, having a very good inventory to begin with is wonderful because right now, we can come back to you and say, "These specific points in these ravines really need to be addressed." We haven't had that before. And so we're looking forward to receiving that information, and that will be a good first step.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments from any members in the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to counsel and ask for a motion to approve a change order to AECOM for the design and surveying services of the ravine adjacent to the North Beach Access Road in the amount of $45,300. Is there a second?
Second.
Was there a motion approved? Is there a motion for a?
We don't need a motion.
Oh.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman.
Moreno.
Moreno. And Alderman Reisenberg, second. Will the Assistant City Manager please call the roll?
Certainly. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg? Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
And Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
AEZ, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Anybody wish to say something? Sir? Please identify yourself and your address, please.
Dan Seebald, 560 Ivy Court. How much time do I have? Three? Three minutes? Okay. I'd like to talk about invasive species and plants in particular. I didn't see a board that this category fit exactly, so I thought this is a timely topic and a good platform. So I brought a specimen along. There's two plants in particular I want to draw your attention to. This one is called Campanula ripunculoidis. That's the Latin phrase, my Latin's not that good. It's commonly known as purple bellflower, or European bellflower, or creeping bellflower. And this is the top of the plant, so it grows in a very stalk-like plant, and it has these pretty bells on it. And if there's a strong, it's taken a hold on the McLory multi-use path between Ryan Road and Deer Path Road. It's pretty heavy this year. But if you were to go there now, you wouldn't see much purple because it's gone into seed where it dries out. And each of these flowers turns into a pretty big seed, ready to get blown down the path further for next year. And at the bottom of the plant, here's the bottom, I don't know if you can see that, there's these rhizomes that come out, and it can spread that way as well. And it's very easy to pull out of the ground, but what I'm not showing you is that underneath this is a tuber that grows pretty deep and is very difficult to get out. So just pulling this out isn't going to get rid of it. And if you go online and read about this, you'll hear a lot of gardeners have horror stories about trying to get rid of it. And the, the concern for me is, in South Park, it's starting to creep in on the northwest corner and the southeast corner. The, the south is where there's the restoration of the habitat part of Lake Forest. So that, and the next one is purple loosestrife, which grows in damp areas like ditches and marshy areas. And the west side is getting pretty bad with loosestrife. In particular, Highway 60 has a bit of it, but coming off of Highway 60 onto Ridge Road, it's gotten pretty heavy along there. Purple loosestrife is a fairly tall plant, and it produces six to 10 stems that come up, and it has all kinds of tiny little flowers. So its strategy is that it produces like maybe 500 to 1,000 seeds that it can blow around, gets in the waterways. And that's the, the main concern is if it gets over to the riverbed, and that would be an infestation. To give you a frame of reference, the municipal surfaces building, right now, in the front is all wildflowers blooming. There's no invasive in there, but if you go in back, there's this marshy area, and you'll see just a few plants of purple loosestrife coming out of the drainage holes and ditches and stuff like that. So both these plants are prohibited in the state of Wisconsin now, meaning that you can't plant those. So what can be done, you know, it's a real difficult thing. I think the best thing is to educate residents on this. If you walk around, you'll see yards that have flower beds, and in there you'll see purple loosestrife, and I don't think the residents even notice it. And another thing, the recent story in, I think, The Patch by Jonah Meadows was about the city of Highland Park is getting a grant from ComEd and Open Lands to replace invasives with other types of plants on the multi-use trail. So that, education from that, you might learn from Highland Park in that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Certainly, the ecology of the city of Lake Forest is important. Seeing no others, the next item on the agenda is our items for omnibus vote consideration. First is approval of the July 17, 2017 City Council Meeting Minutes. Number two, approval of the check register for the period of June 24th to July 28th, 2017. Third, award of a 12-month contract with Call One for telecommunications services. Fourth, approval of the purchase of computer workstations, laptops, hybrid tablets, and iPads for all city departments as budgeted per the fiscal year 2018 capital plan. Award of a contract for thermoplastic lane marking. That has to do with the roads, that's not plastic surgery for any city staff, council members. Number six, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board. First reading and if desired by the council, final approval. Seven, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals. A first reading and if desired by council, a final approval would be appropriate. Council members have the opportunity to remove any of these for separate consideration, but perhaps we'll start first with any particular comments or questions before going.
I had a question on the
Moreno.
Thank you. Question on the check register. I noticed that debt funds is, has a zero, zero expense item, and I was just curious what, what that relates to. And I, I think that's a question for Elizabeth. And why is it zero, I guess? Not that I want it to increase, but.
That's all right. It's the annual debt service on the city's property tax-supported debt, and those maturities come in June and December. So we had made the June interest payment earlier than this, so it was actually included on the prior check register. And then you'll see that again in December, and December is both interest and principal, so it's a significant number, number at that point.
Thank you.
Could I ask Kathy about 1137 Griffith Road? That project? For full disclosure, I'm very familiar with it because the neighbor to that is my first wife's mother, lovely 94-year-old lady. But I'm intrigued by what they're planning to do there, just because that is an incredibly odd property. The size of the house, the encroachment of the adjacent properties, you know, as you mentioned, it's non-conforming. And looking at it, I just can't imagine that the structure that's there could support a second story. I mean, maybe, you know, maybe it can, but it will then be a two-story, very odd structure because it's incredibly small.
At the time plans are submitted for permit, there will be a requirement for an engineer's report to justify that the foundation and the framing can support a second structure, can support a second story. And the Building Review Board did look at the addition, the second floor addition is stepped in. The house itself, the existing first floor, does not conform to the setbacks, but the second story itself is stepped in to conform to the setbacks. So from both a zoning board and a Building Review Board perspective, the project was thoroughly considered and they did recommend approval.
Okay. I'm just surprised. It's a very odd property. Doesn't have its own driveway, you know, it's a shared driveway. It's a very, very strange space for a two-story house. Anyway, just a comment. Thank you.
Kathy, as long as you're up there, you know that I had questions about 50 Western Avenue, which you very thoroughly answered, and, and it was distributed to other council members as well. And, and thank you for your answer, but, you know, it is an exceptional circumstance, but I was very concerned about the degree to which it encroaches on the setback areas in that area. And had it not been for the fact that it's a very special circumstance and all of the neighbors are in agreement with it, and that it is blocked by some significant plantings, I would have had very severe concerns about that because it takes up an awful lot of that lot. And the addition, area-wise, is almost as big as the footprint of the house. So, but under the circumstances, I understand.
Other questions? Alderman Moreno?
One communication. One communications-related and one computer-related. On the 12-month contract for the Call One telecommunications services, I was surprised to see such old technology still in use.
Yeah, they are, actually. We're actually requesting, staff is requesting for 63 current lines. Those lines are still used for emergency elevator purposes, backup purposes, and things like that. Over last year, we had over, we requested over 140, so we're currently working on the process. Last fiscal year, we actually migrated all the fax lines over to IP technologies as well, and we're currently working the technologies out. The challenge that staff is having right now is that a lot of vendors don't fully support newer technology, so we're trying to move backwards compatibility, and we don't want to, we want to make sure everything's still stable, so...
So, Joe, a related question. With the older technology, do we have a duty? I guess I'm trying to understand, especially on emergency communications, we have to record those calls for regulatory and security purposes. How do they get recorded? Is the technology linked up with more advanced technologies? How are you doing that?
No, currently not. Our newest PRI systems that we have in-house do notifications for 911 calls. So we have primary, all the locations get notified of a primary location if 911 is called from those lines, but from a POTS line, no.
Okay. So is there an exception in the regulatory process for those?
Not aware of the regulatory, which one's you referring to on POTS, but I'd be happy to look into that a little bit more.
I think it would be a healthy thing to do.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
And I just, I don't know the law there, and maybe there isn't one to cover that specifically, but I would think that we'd want to be protected about calls that are made from those lines. So I just don't know how we can capture that digitally, if it's not on a digital system.
Right.
And, thank you. And on the computer purchases, I had an employer that said, hey, if you don't need a new one, don't buy it. And so I've extended life over the years in my electronics use. Could you speak to this cycle of replacing equipment that maybe is still functioning, or maybe it has to do with the broader technology process, and maybe you need to replace computers more frequently to bring everything up to current operating systems? If you would address that.
Well, that's exactly it. And if we take a look at, we have different life cycles for different, different systems. Say, for example, the iPad, we have three years, but on our workstation's laptops, we actually have a five-year cycle. Generally, that's a little higher than you would see in private sector, and that's, and that's exactly it. That would probably be, I would minimally recommend that we would keep, as far as keeping them patched and secure for operating purposes. With the staff that we have, we don't do mid-cycle upgrades, so we upgrade these systems as they come in and they go out. And generally, with, after the five years, they have very util, small utility left. They become, as my end-users would say, very frustrating. Not very, but we try to get it ahead of time to keep them productive, so that sweet spot we've been working on for about 17, 18 years now.
And maybe just a...
Can I answer that question?
It does, thank you. Quick follow-on, just to think about the external exposures that the system has on any, any device that has access to the internet, I guess I'll say, or the wide world. Could you talk a little bit about our, our virus and firewall protections? Have you had a lot of incursions? Anything that you would highlight for us that has been unusual or frightening? Anything come, come across that you would be concerned about?
So, so to talk a little bit about, about data security, I'd be more than happy to talk about it. I'm a little reluctant to talk about everything that the city does, but we do have a multi-phased model, right? We have perimeter protection. We have endpoint protection, which is your antivirus. As you see, the firewall's, which were replaced last year, so they're up to date with intrusion protection and intrusion prevention, so it's smart enough to take a look at traffic and analyze traffic, and then notify staff if anything goes wrong, and then shut down things that are, that look malicious. But, but, but those, we have a multi-phased approach that we do look at that, we do analyze it. In addition, this year, as far as security is also concerned, is we also look at business continuity as well. So what do we do in the event of something that happens? We're currently working on a end-user education plan that we will be releasing this fiscal year. In addition to that, we're actually working on our business continuity and disaster recovery testing this year as well, so...
So it sounds like you'll be back at some point to report more broadly.
Sure, absolutely. And there's other things we're working on as well.
Yeah, we, I've been talking with Elizabeth and Joe about that very subject, and he's put together a report of all the things that they are doing concurrently now, and they're talking to some external consultants to do outside testing to verify that everything's patched and thoroughly, thoroughly protected, so we don't have one of those wanna-cry virus attacks that occurred a couple of weeks ago.
Great.
And a good thank you to Alderman Morris, too, who's been helping along that, that line as well.
Right, well, Alderman Morris spent much of his life dealing in those wars, so very useful contribution, I'm sure. Is there, they have a motion to approve the seven omnibus items as presented. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Point clarification, is this motion asking for final approval on the zoning recommendations and the BRB recommendations?
Well, there's six and seven. I thought you were going that is we approving a first reading as well.
Well, I got the impression we're being asked to, you know, approve as a first reading, or in lieu of that, approve it as final approval.
Right.
And that was my question, on the motion, are we asking to do final approval on those six and seven items?
All right, I will reassert this.
Well, that's certainly a staff recommendation, but it's up to the council as to whether they want to do it, but I think it's a...
The question is, is the motion doing it that way?
Does the person making the...
Why don't we read it in as the motion? So, may I have a motion to approve the seven omnibus items, including for items six and seven, first and final approval for each? So moved.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
And Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
AA, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinances. We have one item, which is approval of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 51 and codifying the fee related to public safety pension obligations. And if the council so approves, to waive first reading and grant final approval, presented by Elizabeth Holland, Finance Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lansing and City Council members. The ordinance before you this evening is the result of discussion at the staff level related to the public safety pension fee that was approved last December. After several months of discussions related to funding of public safety pensions, in December of 2016, the City Council approved an ordinance establishing a new fee, a public safety pension fee, that was effective May 1, 2017. So beginning in May, we began to reflect that fee on the quarterly utility bills of residents in Lake Forest. As we went through the implementation, there was discussion at the staff level related to the variety of fees that now appear on the utility bill. We have water, we have sanitary sewer, we put a sanitation fee on the utility bill beginning May of 2013, and now a public safety pension fee. So the question and discussion began to highlight how those payments, if partial on a utility bill, would be applied to the balance. We subsequently received a similar question from Alderman Rumel, and consulted with the city attorney, who recommended two things. The ordinance before you both codifies the public safety pension fee, and also establishes a, an application process for partial payments on utility bills to show what fee, to which fees the partial payments are applied first. This only becomes important if someone is delinquent on their utility bill, and they reach the potential termination of service, but it would be important to clarify that in those cases. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. There being no question. So, any comments? Ask for a motion. Reading and grant final...
I would make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. This is also a roll call, vote, please.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
AA, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have one item, which is approval of a contract for Deer Path Golf Course renovation project, primarily drainage and continuous cart path work, presented by Chuck Myers, Superintendent of Parks, Forestry, and Golf. However, I think it's worth out.
What the heck happened to Chuck?
Director of Parks, Recreation and Forestry.
Bronch, and he grew longer blonde hair.
Sally, where's your golf license?
So, surprise, you get me first. So, good evening. I just wanted to kind of walk us through steps that we've taken prior to this request, so that I can give you a little history and a little background. I promise to be short, quick, and sweet. I just wanted to remind you that discussions were held at the Finance Committee meetings in November of 2016 and March of 2017 pertaining to the golf course master plan and its infrastructure costs. In those conversations, we had capital requests included for funding for the continuous cart paths and drainage system for a cost of $1.1 million. As 2017 has progressed, evidence has presented itself that explains that the need to pursue these, these requests is, is important. So obviously, prior to July 12 of 2017, we actually had several rain events, and a total of $74,000 of revenue was lost due to the inability to run carts at the golf course because we don't have continuous cart paths. So all due to the lack and the improved drainage system. As you are aware, on July 12, we experienced that 100-year rain event throughout the area, and it caused massive flooding at Deer Path Golf Course. And so at this point, I want to, Susan's going to help me pull up a video, so you can actually see the effects that 6.7 inches of rain had on the property. So I have to tell you that he actually did that. That is how we explain. So, following the rain, we had an absolute outstanding effort by the Kemper Sports Management Team, which happened to be here to support this request tonight, to repair and restore the property and get us back ready for play. The course was closed, and it took five days to recover and reopen. Seven out of nine days following the event and the opening, we had to go without the ability to run carts, it was just too wet. An additional $60,000 of cart revenue was lost from the walking-only dictate. And so that is the reflection of what happens when you don't have carts and proper drainage. Now granted, that was a 100-year event, but we've had several smaller events this year that has affected our cart revenue. At this point, I'm going to ask Chuck to come forward, because there's been another repercussion, now that the water has subsided, and we've been able to get out and take a good look at the course and kind of assess damage, and Chuck's gonna, gonna discuss that for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Real quickly, before I get into my request, as we looked at the damages after the waters finally did go down at the golf course, the bridges on Holes Four and Five were viewed and could see, we could see visible damage like this. They had moved from where they should be. Obviously, we're lucky that they didn't move further than this, but there is concern with this, obviously. So these are two bridges that we had inspected by an engineering firm, Black Engineering. They looked at them initially and gave us the recommendations that they had. One of the bridges, they felt was safe enough to continue use. The other one, they recommended that we shut it down. They also recommended that we have an inspection done once the water went down, to take a look at damage to the structure underneath. It was too high at that point to see. So we are at that stage now. They are going out to look at them, they're going to get underneath them and find out what the real damage is. They've given us a quick estimate, they said it could be anywhere from 10,000 to 90,000. And I know that's a huge range, but they're basing that on whether or not there is damage to the structure underneath. It could just be resetting them, restoring the asphalt, and we may be okay for $10,000. So we may have to do some emergency repairs. We, if we do need to do that, we are planning to come back to City Council in September to let you know of that. Hopefully, we can do it fairly easily. I think in the long run, we'll be looking at these bridges. Obviously, with a rain that, with the levels that high, there's not much you can do when the bridges are not that high off the ground anyway. So one of Black's recommendations is that, in the long run, we look at replacing those with a structure, maybe a prefab structure that is much higher, so that these waters can flow underneath them even at a higher rate. So we're working on that, we'll keep you posted. And that's, that's the other side of the bridge. All right, whoop, sorry. So I'm here to talk to you about the request for funding. Our request is to accept the bid and award a contract to XGD Systems for golf course renovations at Deer Path in the amount of $1,175,000. So, there's the request. I know you can't see this very well, but you've probably seen this at one point. This is the master, the enhancement plan that was created back in 2016, working with golf advisory, staff... golf advisory staff and also with the guidance of Lowman Golf Design. We've continued to work with them throughout this process, but this is the plan that was accepted. At the end of 2016, we began to work on strategy for accomplishing some. So, tonight, I'm asking, most of you have heard of, dealt with this, about that. The big thing, the second thing is accessibility after storms are a major factor for green and cart fee revenue and maintenance. So, a lot of what we're doing here is to try to reduce those down days and thereby increase So, these pictures are of projects in the past, but to continue, at the bottom, it talks about the native areas. The funding for this doesn't really fall into the enhancements with no-mo areas, expanding no-mo areas. That's something that we will be working on as time goes by, as in next spring and summer. But we are, the reason I put on there the wet basins, we are modifying some of the wetlands to accept some of this water. Of course, we do want to keep as much water on the site as we can, but some of it has to be moved off. So, the drainage involves some larger pipes under the surface, some of it is tying into existing pipes that are out there. It's a fairly extensive drainage project. So, the benefits of these, of this project would be increased cart revenue, quicker recovery, fewer lost days, reduced maintenance, healthier turf overall, which is incredibly important. Just asked Brian here. Brian is our superintendent on the course. He is all about the turf and he's done a great job out there with that. So, this will continue to improve the turf, greater access for maintenance equipment, more capacity for groups, outings and everyday play. And then, obviously, one of our big goals is to enhance the user experience. So, in addition to what we're asking for tonight, many of you are aware, or all of you are probably aware, that there is fundraising efforts going on to accomplish some of the other items on the master enhancement plan, things like the greens and approach drainage, the halfway house or restroom on the north end of the site, the cart fleet, cart barn, and the driving range expansion and the short game practice area. So, this proposal does not cover any of that. Those are things that we would like to accomplish in the near future, but right now, we're hoping that that private-public funding will help us with that. So, the timeline for this, if approved tonight, we will be planning to start the project on September 18th and have substantial completion by November 22nd. That being tied into the closure of asphalt plants. That's why it has to be substantially complete by then and then by the end of the year to have the whole thing done. There is a lot of sodding and seed that have to take place. So, obviously, with the golf course, our goal is to get everything in place this year so that we don't lose any time in the next year. So, that'll be the key timing issue. So, as far as our bidding process, real quick, we went out to bid in May after we had substantial completion of the permit process. We had all the construction documents done. So, we went out to bid. We received three bids at that time. XGD, bid 1.5. Wadsworth Golf, bid 1.6. I will, quick correction, TDI on there is actually, goes with the XGD. XGD is part of TDI, so just on the wrong line. And then, finally, Midwest Golf Development, bid 1.8 million. Realizing that those bids were substantially over what we had budgeted and what we had talked to you about in March, we decided to reject all the bids, go back out to bid the next month. We didn't just send it back as-is. We went through, strategized where we could reduce scope. So, we did that and we built in some alternatives that, we call them deducts. So, in the bid package, we asked the bidders to give a price on a few items that we saw as maybe being a little higher than we had to go. We needed some flexibility to get it down to the 1.1. If the whole thing would have come in at 1.1, we would have been done. However, it was still over. The second bid we did was in June. We only received one bid at that point and that was from XGD. And it was 1,038,000. So, it was close to where we needed to be. I'm sorry. That reflects after the deductions. We did have to take some deductions out. That's what we got it down to after that. So, XGD is a company that specializes in drainage. They're a nationwide company. Their big focus is on drainage. They will be subbing out the asphalt work. We thought it was important to have a golf company run this project. That was very important to us. And if you're wondering why we didn't get more bids, I think that's part of it. We were trying to attract golf industry companies rather than a construction or a asphalt company. So, we wanted that to drive this project. 1.175 includes a 6.8% contingency. So, be happy to answer any questions.
Chuck, I'd like to just make a couple of comments. I'm very enthusiastic about this, but before, and that's my, that's my most important comment, I guess, but we happened to have a meeting today of the Civic Beautification Advisory Committee and Chuck really walked us through what Kemper did to get our course up and running. And it included something that I couldn't even imagine needed to be done, which was sort of hand washing. I mean, tell me if I'm, this is wrong, but the turf around, so there was, anyplace there was mud, I guess you have to get the mud off. And the team was out there doing that. And it was, I mean, it was a story that just had us all wrapped because we knew about the flooding. We'd seen pictures of the flooding. But then, the putting it back together, and it's interesting in comparing the numbers for us, a couple of the courses haven't even reopened yet, I guess. And I know we got an event from Chevy Chase that came to us because we were open and they were not yet open, which is, which is great news. But I think it's that timely work by the, by the, by the staff there and we really, we really applaud you for that. Furthermore, nothing bad happened to the clubhouse, which, as you know, we had city staff working and Craig Bergman designed. We just installed a bunch of new plants. We'd done a bunch of stuff there to improve it and it withstood this assault. So, I mean, there's some really, really good news about this and it feels like we've got, we've got the team in place, we've got the plan in place. We are about to start with some pretty serious fundraising on this and I think we have a really, a very solid story to tell about what we've already been able to do with the people we have. So, that's my, that's my pitch.
I have a couple, couple of questions, Rob. If it's by turn.
Please.
Couple, couple of questions. I can imagine the Yoma's job. I know what we did at Conway and I know, I know the problems that other courses had on Wentzey. I mean, you just fall that Skokie ditch all the way down to the Skokie Golf Course. I mean, it was just terrible. But a couple, a couple of financial questions is, first, from an operating standpoint, what was the budgeted loss for this fiscal year and what is the projected budget loss? That's number one. Number two is where are we on the fundraising? And a lot of this is underpinned by fundraising. And number three is, is the Finance Committee.
Start there and I'll come back.
Loss. Right now is 50. July with the storm.
Vince, maybe. What you were.
$25,000 ahead of budget heading into July. We had a great July going. Rounds were up, outings were booked, things were cranking and then July 12th hit. We were shut down for five days. We had no carts for seven of nine after that. August is looking very promising. We had our biggest golf outing of the year, 144 players back on August the 1st, an outing that came to us from Wakanda. We've got some makeup events from July scheduled in August as well. We've already started working on some operational reductions in order to kind of cut into some of that loss from July, but right now, it's projected at 50. We may be able to move that back. I do, you know, July financials are not in yet, but it does appear that we should be right around, right around EBITDA, right around budget year-to-date through July.
Okay. Thank you. Fundraising update?
Tim, you want to do it? You want me to?
We're sending out a mailer this week. The staff's been working on that for fundraiser kickoff event on September 7th. We'll be sure you get an invitation check.
At, at the clubhouse.
It's going to be at the club.
To show off, to strut our stuff.
We thought about having it maybe at Conway, but the patio turned out so well, we decided that was an asset in our favor and so, we're going to have the fundraiser right on the So, that's, larger donors will be targeted for that kickoff event.
Invited.
Invited.
Freudian.
Got more experience.
That's right.
Followed by, followed by a email campaign. We've got several marketing pieces that are appropriate for email to send out to potentially smaller donors. It's $1,000 to get you on the legacy board and that can be paid over a four-year period. So, we hope to get a lot of the rank-and-file golfers alongside some larger donors that will be working on individually. So, it's going to be a four-year fundraising period. These amenities that you saw on the screen earlier will be largely dependent on the success of the program. The city won't be on the hook for any of that, but we, I really urge the council to get on board with this because we really need to, as you've seen, we've got to protect our revenue and we've got to add revenue wherever we can. So, I don't know if you saw a piece that went around, but it's getting closer to reality that Highland Park Country Club will close at the end of the year. I think we'll benefit.
Thanks. Don't change. That we're. Would we, it would be. I think we ought to be taking a look at these things from an ROI perspective also.
I think good conditions draw additional golfers. It's a word-of-mouth system and I think we've seen those results. The conditions out there are the best. I get comments from people who know I'm involved in the golf advisory committee coming to me on the course saying, "Best ever." And that's important to attract new golfers. Do we have this?
Yeah.
Can you put this up on the screen?
Yes.
In particular, I'm interested in page three because I think that'll answer Jack's question.
While she's putting that up, I will mention too, that as part of the process that Lowman took us through, they worked with Kemper and they did come up with some ROIs. So, we do have some of those available and I can certainly get those to you.
Right. But here's kind of a quick and dirty. If you look at the largest block of red on your screen, that was the flood and there's really, as, when it gets to be that high, there's not a lot we can do. However, I will say that the ability to recover as fast as we did is a tribute to the staff and their hard work. But if you scroll down a little bit further, you see the two-inch overnight event and we lost carts for four additional days. Now, that should be, the two-inch should be something we could recover from much faster and with permanent, with continuous cart paths, we would not lose that revenue. And so, that is an ROI and that's the point we're trying to get at. These two investments will drive ROI in terms of increased revenue.
I'm saying, Tim, going, first of all, I want to say, you know I'm with you on this.
I know.
You know I want to make this thing happen. I do. I really do.
Of course, it don't bother me. I'm just trying to point out.
Yeah, because it's a tremendous asset. It's a tremendous asset to the city. But with all of the other fiscal issues that we may or may not be facing going forward, you know, how we manage our cash, I think is going to be incredibly important and how we make, I'm not asking you to come back now and delay this thing, you know, to do an ROI, but as we keep moving forward with these significant programs, these significant improvements, I'd like to see, and I think, I think we deserve to see an ROI, to have this thing thought through about how much revenue it will generate to support the expenditure that we're making. And I'd like the Finance Committee to, I mean, I, you know, am I just a voice in the wilderness here or?
No, I think Alderman Reisenberg, the staff would agree with you 100% and I think that's why you're seeing the phasing of the improvements in the way they are. The expansion of the patio was really to drive outings, which is something that we did not do enough of in the past. And so, and Vince can, you know, what he explained earlier, as part of the reason we were ahead of schedule was the additional outings that he and his staff brought in that we never did. So, between the patio expansion and then the drainage improvements and continuous cart paths, we are focused 100% on ROI. I think some of the other items that are on that list, we'd love to do, but we can't justify the ROI per year point. And I think that's why the fundraising piece of it is so important because, yes, they will enhance the golfer's experience, but what does that really do to our bottom line and how does it drive revenue and so on and so forth? So, you're not a voice in the wilderness. I would say that the staff agrees with your position 100%.
Okay. Thanks.
Jack, the only thing, and you've heard me say this before, but it feels to me like we have, the stars are in alignment for us to do this now. We do have fiscal, I mean, there's no, I mean, you know, if we start saying what matters the most in the city, I think it's probably going to be pretty hard to put the golf course at the top of the list. But that said, there is no alternate use for that property. We know that. We can only use it for a recreational use, a golf course. Now, the limitations that were put on it with the original, original gifts. So, it seems absolutely right to try it. The fundraising hasn't fully kicked off and we're going to know pretty soon how effective that is and we'll, you know, I don't think it'll kill us, but we'll have to work a little bit at it and see what happens and, you know, find a couple of people who are avid golfers and this is, this is their dream. And I think we'll be able to do that, but it feels like we've got to give it a shot. We've got to give it a shot and there is, we really believe the improvements that, the outings that Vince has brought, the work that was done. I mean, it just feels like the right team is in place to get this done right and let's, and let's give it a go. I don't think, you know, if, if in 20 years, we have to go, we just can't do this anymore, then, then we do it or hopefully, we won't ever come to that conclusion. But this seems like the time to try it, the way we've tried these other private-public partnerships and see what happens.
Oh, if that works.
And, and our, I mean, if we don't, if we're not thinking ROI, we shouldn't even be bothering with this. I mean, we got, we got to get, we got to get people enjoying it and more people.
Elizabeth and I haven't had a chance to talk about the capital budget, but Elizabeth, could you just comment where the 1.1 million fits in the capital budget and how this all fits together with the longer-term capital plan?
The budget included 1.1 million and the request this evening is for 1,175,000. The original 1.1 million was to be funded, $600,000 from one. The original 1.1 million was to be funded $600,000 from one-time permit fees, both from the Lake Forest Hospital and Laurel and Western Redevelopment, half and half, 300 from each. The other 500,000 was to be funded from a loan from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Golf Course Fund that would be repaid over five years. So the proposal tonight is the $75,000 increase above 1.1 would be added to the $500,000 loan for Parks and Recreation and then be funded, repaid over time from golf course operating revenues.
Is there an interest charge on the loan from the Parks and Recreation contingency?
We did not contemplate one. It's shown in the five-year forecast as interest-free.
All my comments, by the way, were on a prospective basis, not necessarily for the vote tonight.
Good, I appreciate it.
Why is the contingency only 6.8%? That's an exception.
Sorry. The contingency... The contingency is $75,000.
Why is it 6.8% and not 10%?
We tried to keep it down. We were trying to limit the amount we could. I would have, I would have been all for 10%, but...
Apparently, their contingency is in their contingency compensation.
I just, I make the point, that's an exception to policy.
Okay.
How many more events have we had there? Do we have a number?
Oh, golf outings?
Well, no, events, because...
Oh, okay.
You know, we recouped some of this expense through having additional special events at the patio area and such. So how many more events has that patio area given us? Do we know?
Again, I'm going to call on Vince. He has these numbers on the top of his head.
So far, we have, I think it's nine additional golf outings from last year, over $100,000.
We had any weddings?
We had cocktails.
The other day, it's, you have more than 40.
And we looked in, aimed to somewhere around... Have any benefits for two years from now when, instead of being covered in water, there's no water at the golf course?
Well, I will say honestly, I was happy when you said you'd been around a while. I thought you were going to bring up the median again, so thank you for...
It was $500,000.
Okay, good enough. So I'm rethinking now what your question is.
Well, I would guess those continual cart paths will be, if the land is dry, it's better to be on asphalt.
I would say that as part of our fundraising efforts, we have, we'd like to overshoot our budget and create enough funds for, to look at it, at the well situation again.
I think the well situation could come back up when we start talking again about the Route 41 underpass project. Not promising that we'll come to you, but we're always considering that, and we do recognize that irony that, you know, water is our biggest problem, either too much or not enough. It costs us a lot either way. So we're not currently talking about the deep well or anything, but we think that these improvements need to take place either way, the drainage and the cart path.
I'm ready for a motion.
Make it.
About a well about five feet underneath the Skokie ditch. City staff to accept... Systems for course renovations at Deer Path Golf Course in the amount of $1,175,000, which includes a $75,000 or 6.8% contingency.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And will the assistant city manager roll call vote?
Certainly. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
AA zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Additional items for council discussion, we have none. This concludes the regularly scheduled and agenda session of council for today. We will be adjourning into executive session pursuant to Section 51 LCS 120/2C 11 of the I have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. This is a roll call vote.
Alderman...
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Try that again. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
AA zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
Present.[1767.44]